We have sound. Well, I can, I can see the caption, so it's, so it's picking up. That's what we wanted to see. Okay, it is six oh four. On August twenty eighth. Call this meeting to order for the planning board. Quorum check. This is mostly for minutes. Now benefit in the room, myself. Bill Griffin, Brad Will, Craig Anderson, and that's all we have tonight, but we have a quorum. Uh, Chris, Frank, and John are all away. Okay. Public public right is not on the agenda. Nobody here, so I'd say that's a no.
You got it all, huh?
Are you proposing a discussion?
So.
Yeah, I'm happy to have it.
So, uh, so we're at three eighty Freeville Road Site Plan Review. So this is a revisit of. A sketch plan review that we did at last month's meeting. Uh, the sketch plan was, uh, tentatively approved and waived future site plan review pending response from the county two thirty nine review. County two thirty nine review did come back with a recommendation. Related to lighting, there were actually two comments on the two thirty nine review. One had to do with permits for. Uh, the septic system, which has already been taken care of and um. Would be standard anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wouldn't get a building.
Yeah, so they they wouldn't have gotten billing permit without it anyway, so that, so that was. Uh, that one was taken care of and and the other one had to do with lighting. Um, recommendation, I believe, referenced twenty seven hundred. Lighting in this case. Uh, so we're here to revisit this and, uh, take a look at the lighting plan, which has been provided. Uh, I also sent out the two thirty nine review response, so people should have been able to look at that as well. So with that, I will let the applicant, uh, who's being represented by Tom Schickel. Just give us briefly what.
Yeah.
And we've, we've all seen the, the lighting plan, so just if you just kind of.
Yeah, so thanks, Tony. Um, just briefly, um. We, it was a little, the, the lighting level was a little low on the south end, so I think it was probably a good idea to add some lighting. Um, the county wanted the twenty seven hundred C C T, that was their suggestion, that's literally the word they used. It mainly had to do with the psychological effect of people in the parking lot or psychological effect. On the people in the work parking lot. I don't remember them talking at all about visual acuity, but you do lose visual acuity and given the population served here. With that rescue, we felt that, you know, bumping it up a little would be beneficial. And, um, so, you know, from our perspective, you know, it, it's a compromise, so hoping you can approve that. Um, and that's about it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here last month at all, and I, I, could you tell me your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Tom Schickel.
Yeah.
And your role?
I'm the architect for the William George Agency. My firm is Schickel Architecture, so it's a sole proprietorship. I've. Been in business for thirty two or thirty three years, I can't remember, so.
Thank you, right, so, so back up a little bit, just for Brad's benefit. Uh, this building, uh, is for. Uh, to have meeting rooms so family can come and meet with students who are at the, at William George. Um, and have a private space where they can spend time with their family and. I think there's also some counseling that can go on there and some other things, but, but they, you know, have kitchen, they have kitchenettes and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's places. For, uh, right now, they're using a conference room that's in an administrative building that really isn't well suited for what they're trying to do. Um, and so that's the purpose, the purpose of this building is, is to.
Each, each room would have like a, a sofa. Little dining table and then they'd have, um. A kitchenette, it doesn't have a range in it, it would just have a microwave and a little mini fridge, so they could bring food and. You know, get a little bit of home cooking and then they have a television and stuff, so it's more like a little, a little mini family room and there would be nine of them. And, um, because just the transition, you know, I think that's our last move, but last month, but the transition is difficult for kids when they, you know, these are young kids, twelve to eighteen, nineteen years old. And when they're away from home a long time, it takes a while to transition and the idea is to. Have a better facility where the parents or foster care can come and sort of get. Comfortable with each other again.
They, they don't have anything like that up at that campus right now?
They use apparently right now, they've been using conference rooms and stuff, which is hardly, you know, very friend, family friendly. So, you know, they have a vacant room and they stick them in. I think what they're anticipating is that. Uh, I should speak into the microphone or.
You're fine.
So, I think what they're anticipating is that. With that facility, there will be more families coming to visit their kids, you know, like, because they'll see it as a more beneficial. Thing and the kids would welcome it, so I think that's very, but yeah.
Because you have like for daytime visits, it's not overnight.
They, they know overnight there, you know.
So it's not like a hotel, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so, I mean, I don't want to go through the whole revisit of the whole. Site plan if we don't need to, but the, anyway, it's going at the end of an existing parking lot, as you saw on the lighting plan, there's, there's some existent, there's an existing parking lot and there's some existing lighting. Uh, you can see the placement of the building and, and we did review. Last month, all of the things related to, you know, egress and any layout and all that other stuff.
That's the main road over here?
Yeah.
We, we approved it, uh, with the condition that the county came back with nothing.
Right.
And the county came back.
With, with this one, yeah, but what?
So either we, we can do a super majority.
We can.
It's only a comment, so you don't technically need to.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But otherwise.
We, we need to approve it, but yeah.
You're gonna need unanimous.
We, we don't, we don't need a, we don't need a separate majority.
We don't need, we don't have one, yeah.
Um, so. Um. As I understand the lighting plan, the, the.
A new one.
External lighting is just the one, that's the one pole that you're putting it on, it's one additional pole on the.
Right, but.
Towards that end.
That's right.
And then there's lighting on the building itself. Right?
Yeah, there's a, oh, there's some spotlights that are on the corners of the building. And this would. Um, have sufficient light that those spotlights could be used more for lighting up the plantings and, you know, the entry into the building and not for lighting up the park, they wouldn't be needed for lighting up the parking lot.
They're not gonna be shining at neighbors' houses.
They're not, they're not on all night, or they're on like motion control or, or, or most of the timers or.
But, well, the, the, this part of it, I mean, the way we put it in is it's on a photocell and would be on all night.
No, I'm sorry, I meant, I was referring to the spotlight, so on the.
This light is probably not be on all night, yeah, um, but. The, this light, they, they have security in the administration building, so there, people are in and out of there all night long and. So, and the lighting, you know, this will help supplement the lighting there, as well.
Cause that end of the parking lot does get pretty dark.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Any. Questions? Any issues?
You don't want to approve it?
Good, yeah, move to approve the.
Motion.
Uh, motion to approve the, uh.
The amended.
Amended, uh, site plan review after. Consideration of the lighting plan.
Yeah. And the county letter?
Yep.
I'd second that.
With three, and we're, we're approving it with three thousand.
You, you moving it?
See, yes, I'm moving it.
My second.
Okay. All in, any other discussion? No, all in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous, okay?
You're awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Glad you had to come back.
Yes. That's what happens with these things, right?
I gotta come back, but I won't down, I'm sort of.
There you go. That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Nobody else?
Nope.
No, no, this is a pretty light agenda to.
You're welcome to entertain us. I know your brothers, it's nice to meet you as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I know that Jacques and, and.
Bruno.
Bruno.
Bill also lives in.
Bill's right, Bill's right up.
My oldest brother.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Okay, thank you. Uh, on to zoning rewrite, so general updates, so. Um. We did get back, I don't think it was distributed to everybody though, right? Like, we did get back from man, uh, the. Uh, proposed. Um. Data center. Um. So code.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We also got a bunch of feedback, which you should have seen from, thanks, Tommy. Uh, you should, we also got a bunch of other feedback, uh, related to some significant opposition to any kind of data centers being allowed in, in the town. Uh, so that's on the agenda for the. Uh, September fourth meeting. I will send that out after this meeting. Uh, the agenda. We also had on the agenda, uh, John had said in an email that he was going to, um. Send out some stuff, um, but he hasn't had a chance to do that, and so I think we'll, we, if we have time. Uh, we may get into discussing some of the, like, scope for phase two.
That's at the next meeting.
At the next, at the, at the September fourth meeting. Sort of identifying, you know, we have some stuff, some feedback, we have some ideas of what. And I'll try to put that together, so we have something, uh, John's not gonna be at this next meeting, he's, he's not here, he's traveling tonight and he, he won't be here.
I'm not sure I can make it.
I'm looking with.
Okay, yeah. Alright. Um, if you want to move it to another day. Uh, or John could.
I'll send something out to see how many people we can have there, um. I am also considering moving it into this room, this particular meeting into this room, because I think we're gonna get people talking. If, if the, if the data center piece is on the discussion, I suspect we're gonna get.
In common.
Some people in the audience, which that conference room is not really great for, so I may. I'm considering moving in, in here for an idea for that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, that'll, that'll be for when? For the next? The next little zag meeting. Which is September, which is next, which is September fourth. Next week.
Is it?
I'll be here, okay. So there's three we know aren't here, so I'll, I'll send out something and see what we have. Um. So. Anyway, I, after this meeting, I will send that out. That's all I have for generalists, we have anything else we can thought about, no, because we haven't gotten anything else from man other than the, the correct data center.
Can I add, add to that list real quick?
Yeah.
So with this whole thing with George Junior. We, we certainly need to rewrite the education use. Cause right now it's pretty limited, I mean, the definition for it, I think we need to look at it, so maybe Ray, you could help us with coming up with a definition of what you think is an accessory use versus a. Education use. Cause you're, you're the one that's gonna define it, I think, so you'd be helpful if you. If that, if that makes sense for you, because, because if you read it, you read, you go through some of the more state law and some other people, accessory use means, like, the, the bus depot is an accessory use. According to a lot of towns, you know, um, athletic fields or accessory uses. So those would all become subject to site plan review.
Which currently, they're not.
It was currently, they're not, because they're educate, they, they're looped into that education, so when you. You know, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I think we can draw them in as accessory uses.
But, I mean, you sort of did it with this application, you've taken it with George Junior, so, but you know, TC three dorms, the T three B ball fields, the. I mean, it's sort of, you open up can of worms and it'd be nice to have some definition and draw a line in there, unless we just want to ignore it again, so. Which I'm okay, which I'm okay with too, but I'm, it's.
Yeah, we're generally getting compliant with anything that's not just a strict educational institutional building is.
But the bus, the bus depot should have been site planned, if you want, but that's an accessory use.
You're talking about for the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, there probably should have.
And the athletic fields are accessory use, so any change to the ball to that field or the parking and the.
Yeah.
So you, so you all, so you, yeah, you open up this can of worms, and I, I don't disagree with the. If you read the court documents, court says that, you know, the signage and traffic. And the aesthetics could all fall in there. You know, all under site plan review, I mean, that was that court case about the, the most moving sign, the motion sign. That they had, some, they town told, town told the school district to take down moving sign, that wasn't allowed. So they took them, they, they took them to court, they, the judge says, no, it's legal, they took them to, to the appellate court. The appellate court opened it up to the traffic and pedestrians and, and character and opened the doors even further. So oops. So, but anyway, but I think, I think it would be good to have those two uses. In our definitions.
Yeah.
With some examples, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it'd be you as, as the chief planning officer, you're the one that would have to define accessory use, I think. Would, you know. And there are some, okay, if you look it up, there are some examples, you know, online, that other towns abused that were that.
Okay.
You know, and that's why I said ball fields was, I was surprised athletic fields, wow, that's, you know, but.
Hmm.
And bus garages and, and so, yeah, it's quite a few. So that's all I had on that.
Okay.
I have a question, I, I didn't ask it when, when, um, um. Uh, this, thank you, well, was here, but is it, does this, does the state education have anything to do with this, or is it because it's a private school that, that, that there are no. You know, overarching regula, so regulations on the educational use of the.
As I understand it, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, the. If they are talking about educational use, it's a school district. And they're building a school building. Right?
Yeah.
It sounds, yes, no, we don't, we don't have it, it's, it all comes in the state education department.
Their own curist.
And we don't have any. Any say in, or, or, or need to do site plan reviews. But then there's, and Cornell is under this for a very long time, you know, is that there's this debate about what's an educational building, is a residence hall an educational building, is a ball field an educational building, is it, you know, what, what is an education? Purpose, so, you know, what, what is and what isn't? An education.
Regardless of whether it's on their property or.
Correct, it's not just, it's not just whether or not it's a property. And, and, I mean, like. Another example I can give is, you know, East Hill Plaza. Owned by Cornell, it's Cornell property, but half of that building is on the tax burden because it's used for businesses, so it's, it's not used for. Uh, strictly for the mission of the university. Um, so.
Yeah, I think, I think up until now, we sort of just turned a blind eye to it.
Right.
In the town, you know, it's the school district did what they wanted, even George Junior, they built the dorm sometimes without coming to us.
Yeah, the dorms in the last ten years have been coming to us, so.
Yeah, but, but they didn't, the pavilion, they didn't ask permission for in the.
Hmm.
You know, so there.
That's true, they built that pavilion without any.
It's.
It's an aggregate, it's an.
There's, there's a new, it's like, right next to the chapel, right behind it.
Big one.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's beautiful, we, 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 I've been in it, we used it, uh, the, uh. It's got power, it's, it's gorgeous, it's a very nice pavilion.
Right.
But it's.
And the other was the bus depot, it's built the back of the school, but I don't think much they came to.
The town.
TC three.
Sounds like they're really.
They probably, probably use it for entrances and strides.
Probably.
And then the other. TC three, the ones that are, anyway, exactly. And the ball fits in. I mean, it would be, it's, so it'd be, I think, you gotta come up, if you're gonna, if you're gonna enforce it for them, you sort of gotta enforce it with everybody else.
For me, like, because, you know, we had a discussion about, is this something we need to review or not, and, and, and it's, it would be nice to have some clearly defined. Lines.
And, and how, and, and what, how far the site plan would go, if we're doing it on school district, it's just on pedestrian traffic and signage.
Right.
That should be in here somewhere.
Right, right, right.
Make, make it simple, define, right?
Yeah.
So, and is that a county road tomorrow, or is, or town, not?
That's thirty eight, that's a state.
State road.
State road.
State road. Oh, that's where the DOT came in.
What's in two thirty nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The. Cause the building proposes like within five hundred feet or so, or. Or, I don't know what the, what the, I mean, county, it could be five hundred.
Yeah.
Hmm.
But the, um, yeah, thirty eight, yeah, thirty eight is a state road, right?
Yeah.
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 Um. Yeah. So anyway. So we're done with that for the moment, but you're right, it's bound to come up again. And so, this. Discussion about when we do a site plan review for.
Oh, I, I, I don't, it may not come up, but at least if it does, you can point it in the book, so yeah, there's some sort of a rule to follow for that. Or a definition, I mean, rather than, it takes the pressure off of you, right, because then Ray could just point to the book and.
Yeah.
Rather than telling everybody under the sun to say, what do you think, is this?
Yeah.
It's just an educational use or not, right?
Right.
But, yeah.
I don't know.
Alright. We opened the can, we opened the door to it, so.
Co-housing discussion.
Co-housing, you want, you want to live with me or something?
What do you want? This was Brad's idea.
I, I think maybe I want to table this, because I, I'd like to speak to a larger, the whole, all of us, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Just, I don't, I was fine, wait, I was ready to do something tonight, I have.
Yeah.
So why, why, so I sent.
Why don't you invite the housing committee to it?
Sure. I mean, this is, here's the thing, this co-housing and then the next one that I requested, Tony. Um, for later in the year, uh, for community land trust.
Yeah.
These are all ways.
Yeah.
And techniques and, you know, proven methods to. Develop land in a, you know, a smart growth way, uh, to encourage affordability. Uh, to avoid having municipal water and sewer even.
Right.
And, and we, we've been looking at this with the manufacturer Mobile Home Housing Group, the, the county. Um. Our, one of our legislators, uh, um. Has been very involved with, he's there, he shows up at every one. Um. And. And, uh, so I wanted to talk about, you know, just how the. The language, the, it's important, the language that's in our zoning, you know, we're not here to promote any particular type, we're just, we're here to review, you know, I get that, but, but in the zoning. Um. Code and, you know, regulations, uh, uh, and guidance itself. It's, I, I think it's important to have, to, to lay out the possibilities there.
Right.
And, and that's, that's what I want to talk about, so, uh, but I, I, I'd like the input of more, so I like the idea of, of getting the affordable folks, I, I've been having in-depth conversation with Chuck Geisler. And, um, you know, I think there's a lot we can look at, we, we, we're making a lot of headway and we're looking at infill development potential. So, completely separate from the plan work, but it's, but to, 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 to put language in and that, that I would recommend at least. To discuss it into our zoning code, uh, at least says, hey, we're aware of these things, and, you know, we're, we're not saying build it, or do, develop this, but. We address it, that's, that's the point.
So there, there's, as I see it, there's two things we can do, I agree with you. Uh, there's two things we could do, one is, um. We could. Put this as a topic. On the zag meetings. Um, cause we already have representatives from those other boards, um, at those meetings. Uh, I know you can't be at the, you said you can't be at the September fourth one, but.
I could, I could be at the October one.
Yeah, yeah, so I, so, so that, I guess, that was my suggestion, we can either move this, we can either put this on the agenda for the October regular planning board meeting, and I can tell. The representatives. To the zag meeting that we're gonna have it on the agenda at our regular planning board meeting, or we can put it on the, uh, on the October. Um, zag meeting, the October zag meeting would actually make it sooner because the, the zag meeting is the first Thursday of the month.
Right. And, and if it's okay, I mean, I don't wanna, you know.
No, I, I think, I think, you know, and, and even man, you know, the zag means even man's out, right, so, so, you know.
What I was gonna suggest is, if it's not too, too much, I would. Combine this with the, 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 the next one, like the community land trust aspect, just.
We put that down both. So I know, like I said, I know you can't get some force one, but we could put it on the October zag meeting, and I will, I will be happily be there for that.
Okay.
Alright.
Although the October zag is likely to be heavy on a lot of new draft language.
That's true.
Yep.
If I have any light?
Could be our priority. The, the draft language from then would be coming in September. So that would be the main discussion I have for there.
I still, I still couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, the NAM is gonna be drafting, giving initial draft language for the definitions and. Other sections of.
The phase one.
Phase one.
Okay. Do, do we have a lot planning board for next month? You know?
Uh, the only two projects coming down the pipe are the storage unit, uh, Pinky Road wants site time review to expand. And, uh, Lower Creek Road, uh, there's a major subdivision being proposed.
Would it make sense to get her, see if she's available for the regular meeting?
Oh, wait.
Ahead of the October.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're, we're, I'm, we're in August.
We're in August.
Yeah, the, we're talking, so the regular planning board meeting would be the September.
Yeah.
Regular planning board meeting.
Right.
And the zag, the, the September fourth. So we have the September fourth zag meeting, then we have the September twenty fifth regular planning board meeting, and then we would have the first Thursday in October as the next zag meeting.
That's, yeah, that's.
So really, the sooner one would be the, the September. Regular zoning next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, so we could, we could put it on that, like, cause you're right, the, that October zag is probably been. Pretty heavy stuff to work, work, why don't we put it on the, the September regular planning board meeting?
Which, for which?
It'd be the September, uh, twenty fifth.
But, but can we invite the.
Yes, and, and I will mention it, in the September fourth zag meeting, I will mention it to them that we're doing it at that.
That sounds great.
And.
Yeah, and then we can have a follow-up in October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Early October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll be ready for that, thank you.
Alright, we can put you on the cam.
Yeah.
So people can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it, I like more eyeballs and brains on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Good.
Sounds good.
Uh. Planning department update.
Um, well, just wanted to mention those two projects that are likely to be on our September agenda, if that begins. Um, the Andrew Village, the mobile.
Sound.
That application was going into CBDG next month.
Oh, good.
Uh, so we're hoping for one after, towards that sewer project. Uh, the Varna Sewer is, uh. Moving along, they. Went out with another round of, uh. Project B, I think they're calling it. So I think we'll see a lot of that work done before the end of the calendar year. Um, that's about it. Oh, the, the P U D at, uh, Cardinal Drive was introduced to the town board, was, you know, is. And so they will be, they have favorable feedback, they'll be coming back with a formal application, so I expect that. Introduced. A formal application September. The town board, I. Think we could probably refer it pretty quickly to the planning board, so you could see it in October.
And which, which, um, on Pitney Road, which storage facility?
Uh, the bolt storage is, uh, one lot up in the river.
Still a little larger, not the older one. But the, the, the new, the one next to the railroad.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Jason to the road.
Bolt owns that?
Bolt owns that as well as one up on Route thirteen popper.
Who owns the little one in between?
Uh, more.
More than that one too, cool. Cool.
And we're still pursuing, trying to get the. Fire access basically, to get a, a fourth building on there, they're trying to, you know, there would have more land so that they can actually have. A bigger turnaround area.
Did you ever look at the utility lines through there? I mentioned that, yeah, cause utility lines go. Yeah, where they were, where they were trying to call. Like screenings, there's overhead power. If the power goes behind.
If the power goes behind all the, all those mobile homes there.
Okay, yeah.
And it was like, and I'm like, huh, cause it, it wasn't on the drawing, I went down there and looked at it one day and I'm like, huh. They gotta move those, cause they're not, they're not gonna let them put screening underneath the utility line.
Yeah.
So it's like, okay. Yeah, so if it ever comes up, look at it, it, you know, it's like. It'll come back to us, so.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Cause I was like, huh, I wonder why that didn't get put on there.
The, um.
The bolt one. Is likely gonna do his own bridge, right, for what they want to do?
Yeah, they're probably putting more trailers, more container units in there, that's.
Uh, which is too close to the property.
Yeah.
Right, so they're, they're gonna violate some. And so they're gonna want the, the. So not only do we need to review it, but it's likely gonna need to go to Z B A.
Yeah. And the Z B A will definitely look to this board for recommendations.
Yeah, okay.
They rate, uh, when, uh. You can see the trial housing certification was reaffirmed, when, when, when did, was that originally, um. Certified or granted to the town?
I think spring of twenty four.
Also very recently.
Yeah. Okay, we were not the first, uh, I mean, the village was actually like in the first ten communities, uh, and then we were following that.
I think that's a prerequisite for applying for New York Forward Grant, maybe that's something the town can consider. Work for the village.
Yeah, I don't think towns eligible. New York Forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
D R I then. Downtown.
Is there a certain eligibility with, uh, criteria?
Yeah, I mean, I've looked into that, um, have to look up again why we're not, but. I think it's for villages and cities, but not towns.
Not Hamlets.
Not a Hamlet, Hamlet's a feeling.
Don't tell, don't say that.
Yeah.
Do you know many towns have gotten a, a New York Ford? I know none or a D R.
They're not, they're not a ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I guess it is.
I was just throwing that out there, I had no idea.
Yeah, it's, it's for downtown areas and.
Well, it's like a D I was the bigger one that Cuomo started and that the New York Ford was under the current. Administration.
Right, we don't have a downtown area that we would put it in.
Yeah, right, if, if, while you're talking about downtown, if you haven't been to Cortland since they. Finished their. Downtown area, it's impressive.
Yeah, and for two, they, they happen because they're cities and villages.
And, and the, the back end. Diagonal.
People have trouble with it, but yeah.
They still scoot across the street and pull in.
But, uh, yeah, the, uh, main street.
As a night, they did a nice job.
They did a very nice job on it, in fact, the day after they opened it up two-way, I'm like, we gotta drive through Cortland so we can drive up the street that way.
You went to Harry and Tony's, right?
Yeah, so it was, uh, yeah, it's, it's really, I mean, it's taken a long time, but it's really nice.
No, it is nice and all the, all the lines are gone, overhead power's gone.
We'll check it out when we return our truck tomorrow night in. Cortland.
All right, uh, town board update, you're all set, right?
Right.
Yeah, town board update.
Yeah, we mentioned the Cardinal Drive development, who are, um, the two different phases of the thirty five units, um. We really liked it, um, I don't think, you know, we had some concerns about, you know, what the, uh. Um, view would be from Henshaw Road, that some of the drawings look like there'd be a, a tree buffer there. Um, I, you know, I think it would still look good to have a tree buffer there, and we had some discussion about. Whether that drive would become a, a shortcut for people coming up with sap sucker wood stride.
Yeah, we had a lot of the same discussion.
I think they know it will be, and, you know, signage and, and then I, I wanted to know whether, you know, they would put a private road sign up and, and how to. You know, allow use of that road, but also allow people to know it's private, it's like this gray area. Uh, I think the idea that there was community space, you know. Uh, kinda fits with your co-housing proposal, where you're talking about, you know, shared space, of course, this isn't shared ownership, they're rentals, but. Uh, you know, it is sort of the any and all, the above housing that we're looking for, because we'll take what we can. Whatever we can get, and I think this is particularly affordable housing, uh, and will, uh, meet a, a good need, so. Um, I don't foresee any problem on, on the town board level in this project, I'm kind of excited about it. Um. You probably read, there was a newspaper article that gave an update on the Route thirteen pedestrian bridge and where we stand, just waiting for D O T to approve our rebidding of the project, and I think that's a good thing. Even though it's caused a little delay, it, uh, gave us a chance to, uh, whittle the project down a few hundred thousand and, and make it to. A little more affordable, and also sent a marker out to the other, other bidders that there's somebody out there that can do this. Project for three million, so if you wanna be competitive, you gotta come in around that price point, so. I'm kinda optimistic about the results of the next round, and we're just waiting for D O T to say. We can put it out to bid and, and then we'll move forward that process and try and start work this fall.
Where is it roughly now in terms of cost, or has there been a cost estimate performed for the bridge and that, and that we, you talked, said a few hundred thousand dollars?
That had been acceptable to us was about, what, three point one million? And, uh, they had missed a, a couple lists that they were supposed to include in the report about some of their suppliers list and just some technical stuff. That, uh, you know, there, there was a new, uh, form that was just declared, I think in early May for. For us, that these things were due on May eighth, and I think there was some form that had to be, you know, um. Uh, responded to that they just published on May first, and, and so this applicant didn't get the news on that, and. So they put together another application and, and I expect it to be, uh, at least, you know. Where it was, if not lower, you know, from that, that particular company down in, in Endwell.
Is, is there a place we could see a, the, a drawing of the, the proposal?
It's, it's up to them to, to come up with a design, we have a general idea of what it looks like, the, the bridge itself is fairly short.
I mean, you, you can see there's seventy sheet plan set for the entire trash section, but there's no. Uh. Schematic of a bridge, there's no.
Not yet.
It's a requirement span hundred and ten feet with steel bridge.
Which is fairly short when you think about, you know, that bridge, the, the big part of that bridge is moving the earth around it and, and basically building ramps.
Building the ramps up on each side, that'll make, or you're on a bicycle and you keep going. No steps.
And, and, you know, we're expecting, you know, a lot of people using this, you know, I would expect a hundred people a day crossing that bridge, if not more. It's not like a, a typical crosswalk that you might have someplace else, you know, people are going to use this for. Well, we know for exercise, but also hopefully presumably commuting with the e-bikes and even horses.
Well, that cross is an incredibly busy. Location.
Well, especially around our, you know, work hours at, at Cornell, eight, eight and, eight to nine in the morning or four to five in the evening or four.
And I still see people crossing, even though there's signs.
And people tell me, enjoyed the trail, you know, crossing Route thirteen wasn't too cool, but the rest I really enjoyed. Don't tell me this, huh? I don't wanna know.
Yeah, don't wanna know.
Um. Yeah, a couple of other things, you know, I, I, I'm excited about this EMS ambulance reform initiative that, um, we were able. Through T C O G, the council of government, which I, I served on, on behalf of town, to, to push the county to do this study and the study is wrapping up. Um, in the next couple of weeks, there was a preliminary, uh, um, uh, presentation of the study this week with the Tompkins County, um. Uh, was it the Public Safety Committee? And, uh, uh, and I think the county is very interested in seeing what sort of aspects of, uh. Improving ambulance and, and EMS services in the county can be put in this year's budget and. It's just something I'm, I'm trying to push on behalf of the town, that the county get more involved in ambulance services because we are subsidizing the rest of the. County with our ambulance, the people of Dryden, we have a hell of an ambulance service, we're very proud of it, but we. Have an ethic here in town that, you know, says we're gonna, you know, pay for it, we want it, uh, and, and, but other towns don't, and. You know, there's just an obvious, obvious discrepancy in, in who's paying for this service and the county needs, and they know this, the county needs to step into the void. And, uh, other taxing, uh, units in the county need to step into the void and, and lift some of the burden of, um, Dryden being a, a donor. Uh, provider of ambulance services, so. I think there's gonna be some news about this in the next month and, and I, I'm certainly pushing the county to include funding. Uh, in their, uh, next year budget for building out, not just EMS, but ambulance services, so. Um. Sort of a pet project mind. I'm curious what you guys and, and anyone you're, you're talking to has, has heard about T C three converting those, uh. Dorms to housing, you know, they've put them out, there was an article in the Tompkins Weekly, and I, I spoke to the, the reporter last week about this and. And it's a pretty, pretty big deal, but the, the, what, the, the three newer dorms are going, they currently have them listed for sale or, uh. Um, conversion into apartments and, and, or, um, senior living, uh, whatever the developer wants, and. Apparently the T C three foundation can't do that, but a number of the units already have kitchenettes and bathrooms in them. And, um. It just seems like something, um. That could be a real opportunity for, you know, three hundred units, more than one person maybe in a unit, that, that could be a lot of housing for this area.
Yeah, they're set up, have you been in one of the dorms?
Have I been in them?
Yeah.
Um, that's been a while since I.
Yeah, they're, they're set up kind of odd, cause you know, they have a community living room and a kitchen.
Yeah.
And then there's bedrooms off, but so.
They're set up like, they're set up like university suites.
Suites, yeah, exactly.
Suites, yeah.
So there, so there's a little bit of a challenge for. Small units, you know, if you're trying to make small units out. You won't keep that. The luck for the developer.
They're new buildings.
They're, they're, they're new buildings.
Fifteen years old.
So I'd like to know from a planning point of view is how the towns want to approach that, cause you're gonna have to rezone that.
After you zone it, you're gonna have to provide access. Might have to open up a, a particular road that nobody likes to talk about.
No.
Oh.
Hey, that's what I mean. Then, you'll rezone it without spot zone.
But if it's no longer the foundation's property, then, then, then they can distance themselves from that whole.
Right.
Baileywick that they didn't want any part of a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And it'd be a private sector municipal decision and, and then, you know, we can revisit, you know, that issue.
What's that, they built those dormitories to begin with, did they just have a different, um, twenty-five year plan?
The market supported it at the time.
At the time, there was, there was a lot of interest in having residential community colleges, so they, they, in fact, when they first built them, I think they were able to film, but.
Yeah, they were.
They, they were bringing people from downstate up.
All, over the last. Several years, especially after COVID. Hmm, they haven't, like, I, I think they said they're, they're keeping up to eat four hundred beds, roughly.
Yeah, they were keeping.
So, so the, the residence halls they'll have, they'll still have four hundred on-campus beds. But. The, uh, but the. But the, I think, whatever they have now, with it all.
Be over three hundred units.
And these, and these, you know, units, so they had almost eight hundred beds between the, all the buildings, and they're essentially selling half of their space, cause. Those buildings have been sitting empty. Because they can't, they, they can't, they can't put students in. It's just been mothballed.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're starting, you know, some repair. Um, how, how would you rezone that?
Uh, P U D or be logical?
You would, you, you, you could do a P U D out of that. It's got water and sewers, so.
Yeah.
Same.
It's got a hell of a view.
It wouldn't be considered spot zoning with the P U D.
No, it's like an overlay, so.
So it's an overlay?
Yeah.
No. You just need another entry.
Would it be helpful if we did that? Would it be helpful if we did that sooner, uh, rather than waiting for developer to buy it?
Well, the developer.
Or if we guess wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna invest something.
But we can always go into it and rezone.
Well, it's, it's good that we have the discussion.
Yeah.
Can we result lots? Illegal.
I know it's illegal, what is, what's the definition of it?
Right, Ray can do it more, it, it's, it's basically.
It was married to, you're serving an entity rather than a community.
Right, single thought. If we know that that property, the piece that's being sold is gonna be residential, why couldn't we just change the zoning of that lot to?
It'd be more, it's not, it's not.
It's not residential.
It's not residential.
Commercial. Right, because it would be a commercial.
Yeah, 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 I get it. So like when, when Warnick's converted to. To, um. When they sold Warnick's to the, what, what's the name of that, in, in Cotoma?
In Cotoma.
They couldn't just rezone Warnick, so they took in the property across the street. So they took in Crawford's house. And then, and the building across the street, so it wasn't spot zoning.
I get it.
So, so they did both sides of the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions or you'd like me to tell you what I know about the Dryden Lake Dam? And, and we discussed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think at the last meeting, uh, John had asked for, um, an itemization of, of, um. Why the E C came up with their numbers, and I finally got that. Uh, which I sent to him, um. Um, I can share it with anyone else who's interested, it, it's just, they hired a consultant to engineer and estimate. What it would cost to replace this project, um, they never put it out the bid, I think, some, some folks think they put it out the bid and the bids came in too high, that's, that's a different project, that's the. Route thirteen bridge, uh, this one, they had, just came up with their own estimate, and it was over three million dollars, like three point three. And, uh. It took them about four weeks to clear the bureaucracy and release. That estimate to me about ten days ago, so I got it and, uh. Sent it to the conservation board, and I know John wanted to study that and, uh. Yeah, maybe there's a way that we can pull off parts of that project and, and see if we can afford to do it with some, uh, local labor. Um, but what we know is that the dam is failing, it's not, there's not gonna be a cataclysmic event, it's just slowly dwindling. Um, I suppose it could be, uh, uh.
It's becoming more and more porous.
Yeah. And, and they are only, and the D C's only offering a million dollars to repair, you know, and they said that's all they've got. Um, and we took that as their opening position when they came here and, and met with me and Jason and a few others. Um. And this was the regional director coming down, and, uh, we've since pushed back and, and said this is really not. A good partnership, you know, this is, this is your dam, uh, and, and to say that, you know, we can just adjust to a new lake level. Uh, and be told, you know, that there originally wasn't even a dam there, so what are you guys crying about? Since we were told, the thing was, we've got it going around Dryden Lake, and it's become part of this, you know, one of the assets and, and. It's part of, you know, why people are happy being here, I mean, for some, it's, it's a big asset, um. Some Dryden residents probably don't even know it's there, uh, the lake.
That's true. She, she didn't know much of the history of it, though.
She was kind of.
But, cause when you brought up, when, you know, if you look in the, there's photos of people cutting ice on it. There's pictures of them loading it on the rail cars and, you know, and she, 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 she was like surprised.
Well, for the regional director, I would say she knew more than I expected.
On the way down, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's fairly up in the pecking order, you know, you've only got like ten regions in the state, and for her to. Uh, know enough to know that it was, you know, over a hundred and fifty, over two hundred years old, you know, that was something, right? Um. We're, we're meeting with them again, and, and, and same lineup, they'll be by Zoom and, and we'll, we're gonna let them know that, you know, this, this hasn't been received well. Um, much like we expected, um. What other offers you got? And, uh. In the meantime, we, we should be looking at this estimate and, and seeing if they're, if it's reasonable. Um, you know, ha- having the government build a project. Probably is more expensive than having some mixed public, private, local interest work on it, um.
True.
I don't know, I've never built a dam.
Compared to truckloads of dirt, should do it.
I, I've seen some beavers around my property, built some big dams.
I mean, it, it. I think my understanding is that. The original, an original dam has had several iterations and, and mills that were operating and the ice.
Yeah.
That, that dates back to like eighteen oh three.
That's fair, yeah.
So, I mean, there's some historic basis, I, I don't know if there's, if there are historic. Rants available in this, in this environment that we have, but are there other means or ways or? Or resources that can be explored, you know, in conjunction with the D C's involvement? Or not?
I only know a couple of entities that get involved in dams and, you know, FEMA. Um. You know, with the, the.
We do GoFundMe.
With the, um, um. The other range of dam that we have, the Virgil Creek Dam. Was built with a FEMA grant that was, my former boss helped secure more since she. Um. I don't think this would qualify for a FEMA grant, um. Army Corps occasionally gets involved, but this is in an adicable water, so they're not gonna get involved. Um, I just don't know, I, I don't think it's on the historic register, so. I don't.
Could be, could be real quick.
All right, uh, if somebody can show that it's eligible for the historic register, I suppose we could start to make the case, but that. That, that would be news to me.
I think I'd throw some of those old photographs at it.
Yeah.
You know, then load on the ice and the, the ice train that went into the, you know, have those available.
The dam is not, like, that's not the original eighteen hundreds. Place, but, but the fact, the fact that the lake is there, it's.
It's timber, it's a timber, like, yeah.
Yeah, it's a timber dam.
So I was at, I was at Little Pond down in the Catskills, and, and that's like a. Fifteen acre lake, and it has one of those timber, and it's leaking like a sieve, just like, you know, the water squirting out between the lock, you know, the timbers and. You know, I'm kind of going D C owns that, you know, of course, there's camping there, so they can. They're not gonna get rid of that one, you know, so. But.
Well, really, yeah.
Really, no, okay. All right, I do, I do have a couple of questions for Dan. Has to do with Design Connect.
Design Connect, okay.
So last, for the last two cycles, I've talked about doing connect, connector trails to the rail trail.
Yeah.
As a project form. And last year, they, we, we only had a week's notice before they came.
Oh, right.
Before the, you know, that, that came to us a week before it was due, so we really didn't have. Time to put together a project, so I didn't know. I, I think it'd be worth doing that project, if you could run it by the town board, if they're still interested, and Jason said he was, I finally got. Like the Monday before it was due, Jason said he put up six hundred bucks.
Unless there's a competing project that I don't know.
Yeah, and that's what I know, but the dam would be another competing project, if you were gonna eliminate the dam. You could, you can see if Design Connect wanted to put in, you know, walkways and ponds and, you know, small pools that could be fished and that kind of thing. That would be another project through Design Connect.
That, I think, are a couple of years up from that.
You're two guys.
I don't think we're ready to accept those.
Okay, I didn't know that was. Cause they've been working on that project too, which will be good, they would probably love that.
I wonder if there's somebody in the engineering program that would really like to build a dam.
Yeah, that would be a good one.
Probably, cause you know, we, we have, you know, the, the engineering program working on some.
Yeah.
Bridge work on, on the rail trail. Now.
Where the architect here, they could stand.
By Travis Troutman, um, and those bridges. Well, they're probably worth less than a hundred thousand, but.
Okay, so run, if you don't mind running it by the, the feeder trails.
Yeah, sure.
If you wanna buy, wanna buy the town board, if they wanna get involved. That, if that's something to work on, cause that gives us a couple of months. Rather than, than a two week period. To get something going.
Yeah.
And then if we got a good proposal, it, it would work. It'd be like continuous, you could put it, submit it. If you didn't get it in the fall, you could submit it the next year, you know.
And maybe come up with a, equal, uh, you know, world's first three D, uh. Printed dam.
There's an idea, and they could airlift it in, bring drones.
Yeah.
Drones and drop them in.
Yeah.
Are you in touch with that program at Cornell? Is, is that?
Design Connect?
Yeah.
I am not, but they, you know, they, they send out invitations like, if, um, when was it, November last, November and then. And the next one they sent out for the, for this fall, they sent in the. Was it May?
Yeah.
But, but we only got it like a week before it was due, that's the problem, and they don't, even then, they would only do be like three weeks to get something together. So I'm thinking that they'll probably in November send, send out.
I say half the time I get. You want it to make sure that I.
Okay. Yeah, let's just have our eyes peeled for that.
But that, you know, I mean, they've been a good asset for the town, so. If you could make it work, and I think the connector trails would be good for the planning work to understand. Now, as a project gets put in, they, you know. If there's something that's, cause we always forget about connections to the rail trail when we do cycling reviews.
All right, well, I got a note in here to ask.
Have any guidance, so.
I, I'm sure they'll agree on that.
They'll be a good project for somebody.
Well, resurrected.
Resurrected. Bring it up again. Tell them, that's it. Remind, okay.
That's it, I could give you more, but that's enough.
No, that's fine. Uh, minutes approved from July twenty fourth, I sent out draft. Uh, minutes from July twenty fourth, Brad, you weren't there, so you were there, right, Bill?
Last month?
Yeah, yeah, you were here.
Actually, we don't have enough to approve it.
Why not?
We had a, we had a court.
We have a court, he's camp.
He wasn't there, he's gonna abstain. Does that matter?
I could actually vote, but, yeah. That was one of the, well.
Yeah.
Just to get, just to. Just stand up loud. You can say, yeah, they look good to me.
Did you read them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, any comments on the minutes from anybody who was there?
I do, I do have one question on the minutes regarding the recreation fields.
Yeah.
And, and why, why they, why is only three acres of? Why is there only three acres of that land available for recreation fields?
You know, to do the wetlands.
Parking and wetlands.
If there's like eleven acres right there, does that mean you, the seven acres could be used for something else?
No, there's wetland.
No, it's. It's not wet right there.
Well, I wasn't here last time, but I, I, I did study this. Way back, after. After I saw the Wetlands map, and I, I found a lot of usable. Even given buffers. So I think that there's, there could be more use than just sports, and I drew this all up, it's all industry now.
But I might ask my question of what? If there's more than three acres available, that's not wetlands, what are you gonna do with? Can it be used for housing?
I don't have the proposal in front of me, but this came up, and that was the first thing the consultant said is, we have very little acreage to work with here. And that, because we, we were surprised at the limited number of ball fields as well. And they said there, when you control for the wetlands and the, the access and the, and the parking. It leaves very little space or. Or free homes, we got. One big field and then one smaller.
Yeah, I saw the drawings.
Okay.
So I didn't know why they didn't do anything with. All the land up here where the trees are, going out towards the stormwater and.
I wish you'd been there.
I was there and I got shut down, so. But, yeah.
You were there, then, then you know as much as I.
Yeah, well, I was at, I was at the meetings with the consultants, so. Yeah.
So you're questioning their methodology?
Yeah.
Okay.
And why, I just wonder why it shows up in the minutes that there's only three acres when there's really. I mean, Ray, Ray, you know, there's, there's more than three out there, right?
That's my presumption.
Yeah.
And I don't know why they don't circumstrain it. I mean, stormwater practices probably took a truck out for it.
Well, they didn't have the stormwater on the drone, so I. That's, I don't know why. So I would, I would.
Maybe we need to invite this consultant in for the, the talk. Get, get, to get straight from them.
That'd be helpful too.
Yeah. I'm curious.
What's that?
They want more work, please.
Oh, I, I don't think, I mean, there, there'll be a time for that, this was an initial plan to just ask us. Is this headed in the right direction and should we continue? It, it was supposed to not a, by any means of. Uh, even draft of, 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 of plan, it was more like a sketch, is this headed in the right direction? And we made comments about traffic patterns and that clarification about where people were parked and. Added some, uh, information to the, you know, analysis that way. But we're gonna be seeing a lot more in terms of proposal. Um, I'm sure if you're, you know, interested in this, you could attend some of the rec, uh, committee meetings and.